Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming and thank you to the TV audience. Today is the Board of Education Workshop Meeting for November 7th, and we are going to have a workshop meeting on operational effectiveness and long-term sustainability. And I'm going to immediately turn it over to the superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you Chairman Stallings. So tonight, we begin the workshop around our commitment to one of our priorities, which is operational effectiveness. Our Chief Financial Officer, David Flagg, and David Rosenberg from Education Resource Strategies will lead the workshop, but I want to kind of have a step back and frame the session for tonight and of course make the connections to our district model of excellence. We know that as part of our operational effectiveness priority, we're committed to having the structure and the long-term commitment in order to drive cohesive accountability toward, of course, improving all of our district outcomes. And so the work around long-term sustainability is going to give us what we call the interconnectedness between what happens in teaching and learning, family and community partnerships, as well as operational effectiveness. And so if you see at the graphic there, the work tonight and moving forward as it relates to long-term financial sustainability really falls into those three priorities that you see there. Within the teaching and learning, this work of course allows us to make strategic decisions around the use of the resources, our people, our time and our money. And we know that they have a direct impact on our teachers and our students. And then within the family and community partnership, the work will allow us to create another vehicle, another venue, to engage our families and the SGCs to gather feedback on how we're going to advance the district. I'll speak to later on in the presentation as to the engagement that will take place around the budget development process and our new budget funding allocation model. Within the operational effectiveness priority, the work is centered around maximizing the use of our resources and initiatives while minimizing the redundancies. And in support of this objective, our multi-year goal is to work towards, of course, a balance and an equitable budget. And so today, we begin the framing for that work. I'll turn it over to David Flagg.
Yep. Thank you Superintendent. So I thought I'd start with just grounding us on maybe how we got here and what our key elements of success are. So one of the key measurements around the operational effectiveness and the budget process, especially for year one, is to improve the principal satisfaction. So over the last 18 months or so, we've reached out to the principals in a number of different forums. And I thought I'd just share some feedback with you to start us off. So the first one was around the principal's need for additional support and guidance. So you know, I highlighted just two boxes here. The first one was around, you know, 45% of the principals have mentioned to us that they need to receive timely, useful, and accurate data, not only for their school decisions, but also for the budget process. And then lastly, and maybe even more importantly, 18% of them have said they're not overly satisfied with the hiring process. And we're going to talk a little bit about how this budget process interrelates with that and how we're going to move that up. In addition, you know, we went back to the principals with a little more depth and asked them a little bit more specifically around the budget process and what would help them understand and provide some more transparency for them. So I've just given you, you know, a little bit of highlights and some quotes here on what they've said to us. So the number one thing they've mentioned was around clear allocation rules and formulas. And 35% of them have indicated to us that's their number one priority. And there's a couple quotes off to the side that I'll just, I'll let you read as we go through. And then the top three were really ability to participate in the budget process. So I think historically, maybe we've engaged them early on, but then as that process has continued, it seems like this year we need to keep them involved in the decision-making as those decisions start to evolve. And then lastly, was just clearly communicated timelines and sort of an overall understanding of how the process is going to start and it's going to end. And we're going to walk you through that this evening. So after listening to the principals and we're going to share with you a little bit of what our design team looks like and what our work plan has looked like, we started to articulate what we feel like success would look like for this year. Not only across the budget process, but also our hiring process and how that interrelates with family partnerships. So the first one was, we feel like if they understand exactly how resources are allocated to the schools, that would feel like success to us. Also receiving consistent funding with their student needs. And I think we've heard that, it seems like we've heard that for a few years. So we're going to show you in the model how the model's going to play into that a little bit. The third was around creating school budgets that are better aligned to district priorities and school priorities. So one thing we're going to share also is how we're going to bring school improvement plans into the budget process this year. And then clearly outline school leader flexibilities for addressing student needs. So part of this process this year, which may be a little bit different is, you know, there's going to be some things that every school needs, but we want to give the school leaders some flexibilities to make some decisions based on the individual needs of their schools and those students. And then hiring external teacher candidates earlier, which I mentioned just a minute ago, but you're going to see where we've actually accelerated our timeline, almost up to 60 days there. And then lastly, it was just the report out. You know, we like to come back and report out that there's an overall greater satisfaction with the budget process and what we've heard from the principals throughout this process. All right, so we're going to, we're going to continue to move. And I thought the first thing we would spend some time on is just the process itself before we got into the funding model. So the first thing I thought we'd just touch base on is just what our process is starting to look like and some of the changes that we've made this year versus some of the previous years. So the first thing is, why did I hit this? We actually thought about this in two different buckets. You know, one was we wanted to have a well-designed process so anyone could look at this and understand end-to-end, where we're starting and what some of the key deliverables are. And then also make sure that's more supportive for the principals as well as making this much more of a collaborative process across the entire district. So a couple examples in here, you know, around the well-designed process. So we've already shared our key budget deliverable timelines. We did that in October at the Admin Institute with the principals. We're going to share that with you again this evening, so you have an idea as well. But that was important for us to get out in front of them and give them some expectations on what the next five or six months are going to look like. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we've moved a lot of the budget milestones up very early. I think I started last year, just maybe towards the back end of it, but you're going to see one of our final deliverables actually ends in March this year versus April, May, or June. I mentioned the use of school improvement plans and school progress reviews and try to incorporate those into the budget process. And then this year, one of our new items is going to be to publish a guidebook. So we've historically published timelines and some deliverables and compliance type of items. This year, we want to really give them a guidebook. So it'll have the timelines and it'll talk a little bit about what some of the compliance items are needed, but also just give them guidance on where they can make certain decisions, what some of those trade-offs might look like, where they can reach out for help. We're going to actually offer office hours this year so we can interact with the principal as they're thinking through their budgets this year so they don't feel like we've just given them some information and walked away and let them handle it by themselves. So on the supportive side, I'm going to take you to the next slide here because I'm going to walk you through just some evidence of some detail here. So we've actually been meeting weekly with cross-functional teams. And I've just highlighted a few, a few key dates here. But the most important thing here is this, we actually have about a 270-line work plan that we've been working through for the next, the last 45 days or so. And there's multiple streams of work that happen here. We have a design team that's helping us with just the thoughts around what the model might look like and what some of those decisions might look like. And we're going to share that with you. And we also have the leadership team involved with how do we collaborate more effectively from end-to-end in the budget process? So it's not necessarily just about the numbers. It's trying to understand, are we all on the same page in terms of needs? Are we all on the same page in terms of handoffs? And understanding what those handoffs look like. So I just wanted to share with you, you know, just one snapshot of what that, what that starts to feel like. To take you a little bit deeper, I'll go to the next slide here. You know, this starts to outline for you, maybe at a macro level, you know, where we're going to start with move from maybe some of these internal design teams and internal collaborative teams into the community, into the schools, into the SGCs, and then think about what the final output looks like at the end of March.
Well, just to clarify, that the engagement sessions are twofold. One is to speak, speak to the actual budget process and how it's shifted to earlier and how that process looks differently, will look different this year. And then also to get feedback from our community around the actual funding structure and formula, which is going to be different this year.
Uh huh. Absolutely. Did you want to talk about the community pieces?
The, oh, the community session. Yeah, so we will have, as you can see, three community forums. We will engage the SGCs and the PTOs along with our CBOs and our faith-based partners and potential for Hartford Parent University. I believe they have a session in December, on December 15th. And so, given that there are parents that are going to be there as well, potentially, you know, having a forum there as well.
Yep. So I just want to spend one more time on, one more minute just on process, just to ground you a little further in what we're calling sort of our strategic budget review. So a big thing for me this year was to, to make sure that we felt like, after we went through the mechanics of the budget, we determined funding, we determined what the allocations were going to look like, and we, we did sort of all of our internal homework, that when we started to hand off the budget and the information, that the principals felt like they had support from that point to the time in which they were due to deliver some information to us. So I thought I would just share with you, you know, just how we're thinking about it from a cross-departmental perspective and a cross-functional perspective. Because that's, it's just critically important, not only just in a, you know, best practice process, but also in a year in which we're going to implement change. We just have to make sure that we're all talking about it. We have some constant feedback sessions. They're on the calendar for us. And, you know, the principals and especially even the EDs feel like they have a mechanism in which we can start to share some information. So I'm just going to pause right there. So that, that's sort of the process at a high level. But you know, the takeaways from here, where I just wanted to make sure you understood we have our, what the top-end budget process outline looks like, how collaborative it's been and how, what it will continue to be over the next few months. And then I thought I'd just start to dig a little further into the model itself and just how we've thought about, not the mechanics of the model, but just what was important to us as we started to think through the model. So I started with, and just maybe the way I think about some of these things, but I always started with just guiding principles. So before we even started talking about allocations and, you know, the money side of it, just what was really important to us and what we felt like were some, some guiding principles that we need to stay with this year and as we move into the future. Because this is really year one, so this is going to be a journey for us. So I wanted to make sure we sort of set a level playing field and have everyone on the same page on what was really critical. So I won't take you through the, you know, the details here, but I, I thought I'd just take you around the wheel just quickly. So the first thing was me, with me was around building equity. So advocating for equity, advocating for fairness and objectivity. And then also driving transparency, which I think you've heard several times. We need to keep that at the forefront of all of our decisions. And then making sure almost, you know, where the superintendent opened our conversation, that we link community and families, we support learning and teaching. And then when we start to reach out to partnerships, that we start to maximize those partnerships and start to look at what the results are that we're driving through those partnerships. So we'll, we'll start to layer in a little bit, and we'll go a little bit deeper now. So some of the opening questions we started with, maybe a month or so ago, as we started thinking about what a model looks like and what some of the decisions would be, I just put them up here in a slide just, just to share with you my perspective. So we first started to think about school staffing. So based on student needs and individual school needs, what would that staffing look like? You know, what would the positions look like? How do they interact with the DME priorities? And how does that fit to make sure that school operates effectively? Then we went right into student needs. And obviously, there's, there's some places here that we'll, we'll go deeper here. But just how do we make sure we adjust that staffing and have flexibility to adjust that staffing for each one of the student needs? And then also give the principals some flexibility. So where in this process do the principals have flexibility? How do we make that clear to them? How do we make them feel like they have some ownership in this process? And then transition procedures. So this is year one. So at some point, we're, we're pretty soon here, we're going to get into with the design team, just what are procedures that we should implement to mitigate risks? So if, if an individual school, we don't, we don't want to disrupt an individual school coming out of the gate with year one with a new model. So we want to be able to transition over some period of time to make sure the model and the integrity of the model stays the same, but the individual schools themselves don't suffer based on what the model is telling us. So these were just sort of our opening dialogues that we started to have internally to make sure again that as we start to go deeper into the design team, we have these in front of mind. So with that in place, we went back out to the principals. The principals, we, we're actually in our design team, we have two principals on our design team. Again, we've talked to them at the Admin Institute. But then I've also asked them, just what are their greatest areas of need from their perspective? Because as we start to get deeper into the model, I want to make sure that we not only heard them on the process, but we also heard them in terms of funding perspective. So, you know, I'll take you through just a couple. But you know, their top three or four was around, half of them, or a little over half of them said, you know, having funding to support low student performance and student absenteeism. And then ELL as well. So those three sort of resonated right up top in terms of funding needs from the principals.
David, I have a question actually, and maybe this is more of a question for you, the other David. This data set, was it filtered by grade level? Or was it an aggregate of all?
It was not filtered by grade level, which is one reason why I think you see elementary, middle grades, and high students, so it takes that part of the grade result.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's just an aggregate. So we, the same group of principals, we asked for some feedback from them. Once we understood a little bit more around their funding needs, just how much flexibility they would need and then where would they need some of that flexibility? And this is flexibility in terms of support and positions maybe within their respective schools. So again, just, just to highlight a few of them. So behavior tax were a very hot item, having some flexibility around PARAs, and then FRAs and school-family support providers. So at this point, you know, we've sort of taken the principals through the process itself. We've, we've got some initial reaction from them. We took them a little bit deeper into the model itself and got some really good feedback beyond all this. I'm summarizing here, just on what's really critically important with a lens on making sure that when we come out of this and we start to talk about some, some details, that we feel like they're going to be satisfied. All right? So the next slide here is just really just to give you an illustration and to lead you into the next part of this workshop on just what, what the model is going to start to look like. And the model really is a little bit of a hybrid, right? It's, it's making sure that there's, the schools have the appropriate staffing needs based on size and enrollment, making sure the school have the needs associated with respective student needs, and making sure we have flexibilities within those schools to adjust to the uniqueness of each one of the schools. So I thought what we would do is maybe take you through a little simulation. So David Rosenberg's going to help me here. And, and we're going to talk a little bit about, just walk you through how the design team is, has started a few months ago and made it through three or four of these meetings and talk it, and just take you through what that, what it's felt like to us and have you live some of the decisions that we've been working through as well. So, I got to get, we thought we'd play a little school budget hold'em and how the schools should allocate resources to each one of the, of these different priorities. So if you think about it, there's, there's really just three different perspectives here that we want you to focus on. So one was around, as we think about funding for schools, you know, there's this standard, all schools should receive something. And we're just giving you some examples here. A principal, maybe an instructional coach. So these aren't our answers, but for today's simulation, to guide you through this, this is where we started. And then all schools will receive additional position allocations. So the ability here to maybe make some additional position allocations based on their unique school needs and what that looks like. And then lastly, have the principals make some decisions based on need-based allocations. So this is where we get into school or student needs and school needs. So the way the game is going to work is, the simulation is going to work that is, you're going to get some cards. And we're going to share the cards with you. We're going to separate you in two different teams. And you're going to have a series of points to work off of. So you'll get 40 points, as we mentioned here. And as we go through this, you know, you'll have to make some different decisions on what might be important to you based on points and what some of those trade-offs may or may not look like based on your thoughts of what a school system should have within a school.
So if I could continue to put context around this. So what David has described here, the tremendous work.
Might I pull up?
Yeah.
There you go.
Hi. Better. Okay. Thank you. What David has described, and I think the tremendous work that his team and the superintendent's leadership has been happening over the last few months, is addressing a need that many of you, and this, if you were in early board meetings a year and a half ago in the financed group of the board, talked about very early on in Superintendent Torres Rodriguez's tenure. We looked at the existence of, is there clarity around why principals and schools get what they get? Do they understand? Is there logic? Is it, is it a clear formula? Is it transparent? Is there equity baked into it? Or is it a little bit of a, a little bit of a free-for-all? A little bit of entropy involved? And so one of the big wins this year that David has described here is moving towards operational effectiveness with a clear process and clear formula. But also that has a direct impact on teaching and learning. And when you look at the resource examples you're going to, you're going to get to choose from here, you'll see that, right? So for example, having clarity on what you can do means as a principal, you're not arguing or debating with folks in central office or vice versa. The rules of the road are clear. Now we're focused on students. Or I get to hire earlier, especially, and we sort of glossed over this in the timeline, my harder to staff positions, I get to hire even earlier. That's fantastic. There are more people available earlier. If I hire too late, I can't find candidates. And you can ensure that resource use lines up with the clearly asserted needs that the district wants to prioritize and that that is systemic and happens across the board. So this simulation is basically an opportunity for you to say, hey, how, how should the design team who's doing this work, what factors might they consider? And if you're, you're in their shoes now, and you're going to get to do this. So to recap what David has described here, we're going to, instead of playing with dollars, we're going to play with points. There are 40 points. There are certain roles here that we are assuming are assigned to every school because the district says every school needs them. Period. Full stop. Principal, an instructional coach, and enough teachers to meet your class size requirements. Right? So we're not even going to consider those today. Those are fixed. There are no, no changes are allowed. They're not part of your point allocations tonight. The second piece is what David described is an assertion of certain enrollment-based allocations. We can show you this on the next page. So for the purposes of our simulation, we're going to assume, and this is, this is data that's based on the work of the design team. They're meeting again tomorrow morning and are going to continue to iterate on this, so you're very much in progress. For example, saying, we're going to assume right now that the rule is one assistant principal for every 250 students, one social worker for every 125 students. Those choices add up to 26 of your 40 available points. You're going to have an opportunity to revisit these choices if you want to during the exercise. And then the third part, we take us back one page?
Yep.
Thank you, sir. The third part is what we'll call need-based allocations, right? So it used to be in a weighted student funding model where it was all dollars allocated by need. We're not there now. We're largely allocating positions, but those positions are going to be based on needs in schools. And that's how we move towards equity and transparency, so we get clear about that. So in each deck of cards, you have a series of opportunities to invest. And each one has a category, a description of the investment, and sometimes a little more detail beneath it, as well as a point value. And so what you're going to do, some of, some of these, by the way, say they're for all schools, but most of them are based on individual groups of students. Did you jump ahead two pages for us?
Yeah.
So here's what we're going to do. We have 20 minutes assigned to each of these. If time needs to adjust, we'll adjust it. We're going to do this in two parts, which is a total of five steps. So the first part, you're going to work with your group of probably three of you each. And you're going to go through your deck. And you're going to do this fast, right? You're going to say, all schools, staff a librarian at all schools, 3.5 points. Is that a yes, no, or maybe? Do I like that, or do I not like that, or am I not sure? Put it in your pile. Whip through it as fast as you can. You've got about 25 cards. Go back to your maybes, then put them in yes or no. We're going to give you 15, 20 minutes for that part of it. Then you're going to total up your points. And I am willing to bet you a few points that you will have more than 14 points chosen of needs you would like to fund. Welcome to the world that David lives in and that we all live in. And so then you're going to start prioritizing. The prioritization is going to be a combination of one, revisiting your yes pile to reduce it down to 14 points, or as well, going back to the, the decisions that we've proposed on those first 26 points and say, do you want to revisit those decisions? So if you go back to that, I'm sorry I'm jumping around.
No, no, it's okay.
So if you go back to this and you say, oh my gosh, I need to find some points, some resources essentially, one way I could do that, I'm making this up, is to only staff a psychologist for every thousand students. Well, instead of three points, we're going to assume that's one and a half, right? You've, you've, you've halved the number of psychologists that you're automatically allocating, although principals may have the opportunity to hire more with, with available resources on their own. So you can find different ways to fund it, but your goal is to get the combined mix down to 14 points. Then what we're going to do is we have all the cards listed up on the wall over there. We're going to ask somebody to just mark off where you, where you, which cards you chose to play, plus any other changes you made. And we'll have a little bit of a discussion about, well, were there shared perspectives? Were there different perspectives? What does this tell us about our priorities? And just as importantly, what does it tell us about the trade-offs we're likely to make? Because as we say all the time in this business, you can do anything, but you can't do everything. We do not have infinite resources. So there's going to be some cards that you love that you will not get to play, and that very much mimics the, the decisions that HPS leadership are trying to make right now about how they allocate resources. Anything you want to add and any questions from our players? Okay. We have, yes?
Are, are we really about to play this game right now?
Here we go.
Okay. So we're going to move forward with the meeting as though we don't.
I have, I have, like, the person, like, I have, I have to play it right now. So I'll opt out of the simulation, of the simulation, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. So we have one, two, Superintendent, do you want to join a team? Okay, great. So let's have Superintendent and this side of the table, one, and we'll give a card deck to the other side of the table. Just pass one over. And you can go to it. And please feel free to raise your hand or pop over if you have questions. Our goal is to facilitate this as smoothly as possible. For now, so let's go back to the steps page so we can all see what we're doing. So, oops, the other way. Good. So right now, you're on step one. You're going to go quickly through and say, look at it together. Have one of you be the reader, one of you be the tracker and say, read the card. Do we like the card? Yes, no, maybe? Go through it. You're going to have lots of things you like. That's okay.
You said 20 minutes for this?
Our plan was to give you 20 minutes. Do you feel like that's too much or too little?
Yeah, no, we'll be done quick, I guess.
Yeah. Part of what we try to do here is use time as a way to force hard decisions because more time often doesn't make the decisions any less hard. And it's a simulation, right? You're not making long-term decisions for your students.
I think there are going to be those or maybe those, but right, then we'll come back to maybes to pick yeses and no's. So maybe you're, maybe, okay, maybes are here, and those are going to be.
Hello, I am your proud superintendent, Dr. Leslie Torres Rodriguez. I am leading the crucial process of reimagining and restructuring our school district. I need you, all of you, to be significant partners in our process. We are doing this imperative work to deliver on our commitment to ensure improved student outcomes and equitable access to resources for each and every one of our beautiful and capable students. When we have completed this process together, we will hold in our hands a stronger, more equitable school district designed to serve all students well. A plan built by the entire community that will benefit the entire community. We at Hartford Public Schools are coordinating the process. But you, the community, families, students, teachers, and all of our stakeholders are the voices and the minds that must inform this work. By sharing your thoughts, you will help to co-create our district model. Our work together, which takes place over the coming months in community meetings with families, partners, and schools, will culminate in the presentation of recommendations for district models for excellence. Different ways in which the district can be reimagined while ensuring the health and viability of our neighborhoods, and continuing to provide access to opportunities and services for our families and students. For news about meetings and ongoing updates on our process, please visit our district website at www.hartfordschools.org.
So, yeah, when you're ready, that's okay. If one group's ready and the others catch up, that's totally fine. So when you're ready, you're going to have all your yeses in a pile. There are going to be some number of points, and my guess is it's more than 14 that you've chosen. Have you chosen only 14?
Oh, we already went down to 14.
Brilliant. Okay.
We already went through that part of telling David what he has to class.
That's great. All right. So you, this group nearest to me, is basically on step four. So the only question for you is, are there things in the page I handed you of the sort of standard allocations that you would choose to change so you could put in more to your yes pile? Or are you comfortable with that proposal of those things? And again, we put that as a base case, because the design team is reviewing that exact idea tomorrow. Right? So it's pretty real.
Are we working with the assumption that a psychologist is mandated? We need services, or you don't?
You mean the services they're providing?
Yeah.
No, because we've already taken those off back here.
Yeah, so on that list right now, we're saying every school gets one psychologist.
Yes.
Every 500 students have the minimum of one psychologist per school.
And that psychologist is there to provide mandated services first, right? Special education, IPDA mandated services first.
Yes.
Well, I mean, if you look at, if you look at, we had, you know, yeses. Right, it was getting the student group, which is right up there. Secretary, it was the dean position, right, which... Yeah. Right, so that was something to consider. You know, in some schools, and Leslie, feel free to go back and forth with me on this. I think in some schools, an assistant principal is smart. In some schools, I think this might be a better adjustment. Does that make sense, right? So, I don't... No, it's one, yeah, it's one for one. So I don't, we wouldn't be able to do it anyways. This was, this was highly, I think, high. I think that was it. I think everything else. Because, so what does that say? Social worker, so it's 125. And this is 125. So it's, it's just one, so it looks like it breaks it down in half. So it looks like it would be, it says provided in addition. So it's 125. So it would be that says every social worker, 16, 16, 20, whatever.
Okay, so the case will be small.
The case will be cut in half. Yeah, which, I mean, that's huge.
We're talking about certain schools, right?
Of course, yeah. Pretty much, yeah. Yeah. I actually wouldn't, I probably would leave this alone, except for that one change, like I said, where, you know, maybe at a different school, you might need that dean instead of assistant principal. But I mean, come on, we need social workers. But that would be, in terms of salary, it would be higher. No, it was like four.
Oh.
So, I think, I think if we're honest, right, we would actually be under.
Okay. So I think at this point, both groups are down to, you've got your 14 points. And you've done that by choosing cards that are based on additional allocations for schools, and possibly propose changing some of the enrollment-based allocations that are on the sheet that I gave you as well, to give you more room for need-based allocations. So what I'd like you to do now, we've got all the cards up on the wall there. And I think the easiest way to facilitate this would be to have one person or more from each group go up. Just take a pen and put a little mark on the cards that you chose to play up there. Okay? And the cards are numbered, in the bottom right-hand corner of each card is a little number. On the wall, they're in order from lowest to highest, as you go left to right. So if you're looking for the card, please find it. So just go up, mark the ones, and then we'll take a look at, where do we have both groups playing? Where do we have one group playing? Where do we have neither group playing? And we'll talk about it. Okay. Fascinating. Trust me. Okay. So, let's go to our discussion questions for a moment. Let me ask one more question before we look at the trends that are here. Did either group choose to revisit the per-school allocations that we proposed of those 26 points? Did you change any of that, or did you leave it as is? Group. To, so a less rich allocation of psychologists, which would save you a point or point and a half, basically?
Yeah.
Got it. Okay. Which gave them the ability to find 15 and a half points of need-based allocations.
And we left it as is, but I mentioned that for some schools, an assistant principal makes sense. But for other schools, it might make sense to have that dean working on behavior management and that sort of stuff, so.
Got it.
But we left it as is.
Good. Okay. So let me share with you what, there were four cards that you all played that both groups agreed on. And together, they total 5 and 1/2, 6, 8 points of your 14. One was additional literacy support, a literacy specialist per 125 students for literacy instruction in elementary grades. Second was, actually, two cards that are all put together here for purposes. Robust sports programming resources in middle school, and sports in after-school in high school. And then the last piece was, every school should get a school police officer. So everyone said, those are additional pieces that we want to include.
We almost took the police officer off, just as a heads-up.
Oh, okay.
Like, not a police, Hartford Police Officer, but our school security.
A school, sorry, a school police officer, correct?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Group one, which is the far group, said we would provide additional special education case management for schools with large special education populations. You would staff a nurse at every school. You'd staff an office secretary for every 250 students, minimum one per school. And you would provide additional funding of online and other instructional materials for students classified as gifted. So the needs there, to be clear, are, the two student-based needs are special education and gifted. And then the all-school pieces are nurse and office secretary. Group two, closer to me, chose four things. One that was based for all schools, and three that were student needs. The all-school was stipends for teacher leadership roles. The all schools, the targeted schools were additional teachers in high-poverty schools to enable very small grouping in ELA. In high, in schools with a lot of English language learners, additional case management resources. Particularly, that was 12 schools that each have a 30% or more ELL population. And then case management resources to schools that have a high concentration of chronically absent students.
And we had an extra 0.25, so we're doubling down on that last one.
Oh, nice.
Yep. Chronic absenteeism.
And would you put...
So we were at 13.75, but, yeah.
Every dollar counts. And would you put more case management resources in the same school? Would you double the resources per school in the same schools? Or would you go deeper into the pool of schools? All right. Would you put more resources in the schools that all have 40%, at least 40% students chronically absent? Or would you spread resources across more schools? I presume it's you put more in the same schools. Yeah. You doubled down on that. Okay. So I want to name a couple of things here. One is, there were some consistencies here, right? Elementary literacy, sports in after-school, police officer for all schools. I want to acknowledge that none of those were based on student need within a level. They're all based on a level, or all schools. And one thing that we know is, anything that is all schools, unless there's a need embedded within it, is going to get you closer to equality, but not closer to equity.
Yeah.
Okay? So we know there's some things that we wanted to have in there. And then there was this distinction here. Again, there were still some, a bunch of things here that were all schools, but we had votes for gifted, special ed, chronically absent, high ELL, high poverty. And all of these are choices that your design team is going to be making of saying, well, where do we want to have allocations go to schools based on need? And as you can see, there's a lot of different choices. So, questions we want to ask for you, and I'd like this to be an open-ended conversation. Why do you think the needs that you highlighted consistently, which was the early literacy, sports in middle and high school, and school police officer, float to the top as something you're willing to spend more resources on over other things? And then, secondly, what are decisions about what you choose to fund and not fund tell us about our priorities as a district right now? And then we'll come to question three in a little bit.
Well, I, I thought it was interesting that there was a, when it was mentioned about the special-needs students, that the support for the special-needs students, but the gifted students wasn't included in the special-needs students. It's separate when they're special-needs students. So I found that interesting, that we would have to have another allocation, and they're not included in that population.
Yeah. There's a distinction in the cards, which may, right, may or may not be the way the district chooses to go, of thinking about students on individualized education plans, IEPs, separate from those who are identified as, quote-unquote, gifted. And different numbers, right? You have many more students on IEPs than you do students in your gifted programs, which is typical.
And we discussed how desperately we wanted to have the librarian in all schools, but it was a very high point, had a high point attached to it. And we were, and we did, so the extra person, like, to deal with the chronic absenteeism, we looked at it as, we had the family support provider that could take that on. So we were thinking about things that we thought some of these positions would take care of. So that's why we didn't make certain choices.
One group chose, and again, this is a rapid-fire game, right? You're not making long-term decisions. And lord knows, none of your constituents should take this as a statement of anybody's actual priorities, right? It's a simulation for that purpose. We had one card that is involved additional case management support for schools with many students on IEPs. That was a three-point card, so it's kind of an expensive card. And another one that another group played that was additional teachers in your 12 highest-poverty schools, so that you could have very small, flexible groups for ELA instruction. And I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about the trade-off, if you just simplified your trade-offs to those two things, just state out loud some of the pros and cons that you all thought about, about why one, or why the other? And again, I'm choosing those two because they happen to be in the mix, and they happen to be the same amount of points. Not in any way because we are trying to pit needs against each other, just to illustrate the kinds of trade-off decisions that your design team, and David, and Dr. Torres Rodriguez, and the team are going to be making.
And what was the card numbers? Was the second 115?
It was, so the card numbers are 28 and 18. So, 18 is additional teachers in high-poverty schools. Your 12 schools with the highest proportion of low-income, children from low-income families. Additional ELA teachers, specifically to push into ELA classes, so that you could have smaller group instruction in those classes. And the more ELA teachers you have, the more you can reduce the student-teacher ratio, and you could have more teachers in those classes. So let's just make the argument for each. Ideally, you can do both, right? And you could have, right? You could have, there's enough points, you could do both. So, just a little bit about sort of pros and cons in your discussion. Give us a view into what you talked about in your group, regardless of the proposal you made in this very rapid-fire simulation. regardless of the proposal you made in this very rapid-fire simulation. And that's exactly, what was your, let's focus on the thing that you did choose. What was your rationale for it, right? Let's just make the cases for why these are relevant needs to be thinking about.
So, I'll take the risk. I'll, you know, I'll go first. It obviously wasn't that we necessarily valued, or...
Nobody knows who chose what, by the way, so...
Oh, yeah, that's true. So, I guess for us, but I think, I think it's going to help me explain why we picked the one we picked, right? So, for us, we did pick the staffing additional teachers in high-poverty schools, which is 12 schools total, right, to enable push and support in ELA classes, right? So, that was us. So, for me, we, I think, my opinion, we did this because if we're able to decrease these class sizes, right, and have more interaction with faculty, for students to have more interaction with the faculty, that is going to be much, anytime you can decrease a class size for a student, it's going to make a huge impact. That's the way we interpreted it. And that, by no means is that saying that the other three-point card doesn't matter. We probably should've, right, in going back, included it in some way or form. But anytime we can decrease class size and have more interaction with the teacher, that's pretty important to us as a district, I think.
And what was the case for the additional case management supports for schools with large populations of students on IEPs? What's the advantage to that? There clearly is one, right? It's a valuable resource to have.
I think that was ours, and immediately, we agreed that that was going to be one of our picks. And maybe because both of us know, if it's not a personal, if it's not personal, it's something we've been connected to, that we know our schools, how IEP goes, and how they have not gone as we would like them to go. And we thought it was important that that piece of work is tracked and done carefully, and a lot of support around it, so that the special-needs student is getting what they need, and we're staying on top of it all the time. And so, it's something that we, I think it was like more a personal thing, that we know what goes wrong, and we would like to see that, the extra support around that. If I'm speaking for you correctly, Julio.
Great.
On the other issue, I've always had sort of mixed feelings about the English language support, because I think it's something that is really all around us, and it's not just the school's responsibility. And I entered school as a monolingual child. We always spoke Spanish at home. I never had language support services in school. They didn't exist at the time. And I learned the language. I had no difficulty, and you just have to take advantage of everything that's around you and not just depend on the school.
Yeah. There's an interesting question that is not captured in the cards here, on are we talking about literacy? Are we talking about ELA, right? Literacy could be Adle, and ELA, right? Could be Arte de Lingo Espanol. Here, it's framed as ELA, and you raise an interesting question about how we best serve our Spanish-speaking students. I would like to pose the third question here to you. And so, and again, to recap the context and go back to what David described earlier, the Hartford Public Schools Leadership Team and this design team that includes principals and central office staff and people in multiple different roles are trying to build a system, a model, that is clear and transparent, that everybody understands why schools get what they get. But what I think is a pretty obvious takeaway for us in this conversation is, there's never going to be enough to do all the things we want to do. So, my question for you all is, how does this experience, this simulation, lead you to think about how each of you, and as this board, supports HPS in the development process of this resource allocation model, but also implementing it, right? Keeping it in place and maintaining the operational effectiveness of it, regardless of the choices that are made during this development process, right? Because there's going to be some need that is not captured, that somebody would like to see captured in the model. So, what is this, you know, what reflections can you share about your role as board members and your, and/or guidance to David and the team as they go through this process?
I'll go first, and I'll keep it short. I think you said something earlier, David, that I think stands out, right? So, I think, you know, going at this from a framework, from a lens of equity, right, and trying to approach it through that lens, instead of... I keep thinking of that picture that we see all over social media sometimes, and it's been used in PowerPoints and stuff before, but it's the folks watching the baseball game, and they're standing on the boxes, right? And you have, you know, certain obstructions for... So, going at it from that framework of equity versus equality, right? Equality doesn't necessarily, that's trying to... It won't get us to where we need to be. We're in a position that that won't get us to where we need to go. So, I think, looking at it through that framework, through that lens, I think if equity is at the top of what we're trying to do, we know that we have some schools that are struggling a little bit more than others. Looking at it through that framework, I think, is one of the ways to go.
I, when I think of, we just have to know our school community so well that we just know what the needs are. Because I do think, when we look at it, okay, district-wide things, it might be a school that doesn't need that thing, but we're making that decision, you know, a district-wide decision. So, I just think we have to know our schools well enough to know what each one of them need. And it's, I don't know, we're going to have to pull on other resources outside of what we, what we have, obviously, and shared things with schools. But I definitely see it's definitely a difficult task, but we just have to know our schools well enough to know what each one of them need and try to get them those things.
Shante, is there an example that you can identify in terms of something that all schools would need and then that not all of them do? I mean, I have my, our own ideas, but as our team kind of thinks through this...
And it was funny, because we, when we had the sports, right? Sometimes, sports is on way low on the list. But for some of our, for our middle schools and high schools, it's something very important, and it can be, it can be something that could be used, that could help them academically. So, it's like, sports, okay, no, but... So, sports for middle school and high school, I think that is one of the things that's needed, because it helps them academically, some shape, form, or fashion.
And with behavior, in some cases.
Yes, everything, like, it's so many things. Because I, when I subbed for almost a school year in middle school, hardest thing I ever did, but it was a basketball team. At every, every game, I was there, where I'm leaving, I'm finding where their game's at. So, when we had a little incident in the classroom, then I'm looking like, "Really?" And they was like, "Oh, she come to all our games, you gotta..." You know, so it was the supporting them in their games, you, I got an additional layer of respect, because I'm showing them, I'm showing up at your games, I'm traveling across the city to support you, and sometimes, I'm the only person, other than your coach, that's here to support you. So, that connection, the basketball team, I'm having no problems out of them. They're not disrespecting me, they're not being slow to, you know, get on task because I'm at their game. So, those kind of things that we don't think about when we think about athletics, but is there. So, sometime, and I, but, so that's why I always have a heart for the athletics. But as far as anything outside of athletics that all of our schools need, all of our schools do, the card that we were on that did talk about making sure our special-needs students, that they, that are, that we're in order with our paperwork and everyone with the IEPs and all of that, that, to me, is a priority as far as meeting the needs of our special-needs students as a district-wide.
We don't have a full-time nurse at every school. And that, to me, is a real problem.
Yeah. And I do have a wondering, which is somewhat tangential, but like, other districts don't have a nurse in every, in every building.
Yeah. Many don't.
Many don't.
Some will say that we, that that's what we do. It's a requirement. Some will split nurses based on enrollment. At least one district where we work, they've contracted to a third party to providing nursing services as an efficiency for the district. I think the, you're raising a really important tension, and it's particularly relevant in Hartford, which is the tension between when does the district say, "Here's what you get, because these are district priorities," and when do principals get to say, "Actually," or someone says, "This is what's right for my school." One of the factors that is a very technical thing, and we're not going to get into detail, but I want to name, that the design team is looking at, is what types of allocation should the principal get to swap, right? So, just because I give you an AP, or I give you a reading specialist, or I give you a case manager, some of those roles, you're giving the principal, and you may also be saying to the principal, "But this is one you're allowed to trade in for something else." And so, having very clear rules about that becomes important, too, and who gets to make those decisions, and what are the full HR system considerations and all of that. But this is a really big balancing act, and I, between, does the principal decide and does the district decide? And what we're building here is a hybrid model, and the trick is to be very clear about what the model is, so everybody can play within it. And then, next year, you can revise it, as you learn along the way. But the key thing is to be true to whatever it is that you decide.
So, that was going to, I guess, just building upon what you said, as well as others, it definitely made me think about the process. You know, superintended to your question, one of the cards was about career and college readiness. Now, she and I just met with some others where they really talked about, "Oh, there's others in the community that can assist with that." And I think it goes to Mrs. Brody's point in terms of, you have to know your community, and I'm saying it now from the asset perspective as well. And we know this has been really important as we've gone through the DME kind of process, and having a good sense of that in community, and obviously, taking the time to build those relationships and those partnerships. But it was one of the ones that some of you may know that's really important to me, college and career readiness. It was one for me, I was like, "Oh, yeah, we don't have to worry about that, because there's others in the community that are willing to offer us those resources." But to your point, I, going back to that process, I wonder if that principal doesn't know that, right? And, but we, you know, knew that, or, you know, you know that from the central office district perspective. So, I definitely respect your comments and acknowledge this tension, and where exactly is that place? Because if, you know, if what's said to us is like, "Hey, we're going to have this list," right, that we're illustrating here of these are principals, social worker, et cetera, et cetera, and then we have a school that doesn't follow that, is that okay? I don't, I don't know. These are non-negotiables. So, it did make me think about that process, so thank you.
And that's some of what we're going to identify throughout this process, especially in working with our principals, which is why we've been so intentional, you know, during our monthly administrative institutes, to really, one, as you saw, get at their thinking. But there might be a point in which there's a disconnect, which is why it's so important for us to clarify what those boundaries are, what we own in terms of the decision-making, what they own in terms of the decision-making. And the other piece that I wanted to speak to with regard to what Ms. Oliver referenced, so, yes, we might, we might have the information at central office, but then, we have to be mindful that we create the conditions for our principals in our schools to leverage those resources and not necessarily leave it up to a school-building principal to, you know, have to go and establish those partnerships when we already, right, have them clearly established, delineated, and have processes around them. And then, the other thought that I had was around the work that we hope to be doing with ERS around the community-school piece. And while I hear Ms. Brody and Ms. Oliver reference that there are community assets, I always worry the sustainability of those, right? So, we tap into those, and then, say, three years from now, those resources are no longer available to us. And so, I don't know how we mitigate for that, but it's something that we have to be mindful of. When the grant sunset, or, you know, those things happen, right? How do we continue to sustain the work?
Yeah. It's a very real challenge, just as generally thinking about the volume of state funding or other resources that come to you. And so, yes, figuring out, you know, and even thinking about, in the community partnerships, to what extent does long-term sustainability become a criterion or a guideline for encouraging schools? And there's a trade-off with that, right? Because does that lead, but does that lead you to, sorry, we're going deep on this one for a moment, does that lead you to inadvertently be guiding principals to work with partners that are only well-established? And what about the less well-established? And what equity challenges do you create then, right? So, there's, again, trade-offs associated with it, but the transparency, the awareness in asking the questions that you're asking is, from what we've seen, really critical to having a forward-thinking conversation. And that's what you're doing, which is really encouraging.
That's, I, that's interesting. And I just wanted to sort of think, get through, because as we were talking, what I was thinking was, well, from an equity standpoint, if we're trying to achieve tier-one programming in every school, and then scaffold up tier-two, tier-three support, that would, that does look different. I mean, the problem is the same, and the solution's individual, to whatever school. So, for example, we have a problem, we need tier-one programming. School A has solid supports for tier-one programming, but not support for tier-two, tier-three. So, how do we philosophically support that need? I mean, so, for me, the issue is also capacity of instructional leader of the school and what the school's focus or theme is. So, again, if I am a content specialist, instructional leader, but I never work with the budget, and I don't know how to allocate resources, that's a challenge in and of itself. And most of our instructional leaders aren't really versed in resource allocation and systematic operational effectiveness from a leader standpoint. So, that, that's also a major deficiency, when we're talking about how we're asking for resources, how we're requesting it, how we see the problem. So, I just wanted to...
And Chairman Sines, that's quite common, right, among principals around the country. And so, and David, you can talk about this. The process that David described earlier, and what that cadence looks like over the course of the year, is designed to be, A, completely grounded in the needs of the school and the needs of the student in that school, and B, when do you facilitate the conversations between the principal and their, and their director, and others on the HR and finance and special education, other teams within the central office, at specific times with specific questions in mind?
Exactly.
That, having that clear process is part of the key to that, recognizing that you're right. Like, we're, this is not a district where our theory of action is having principals go it alone, and that, therefore, the process needs to reflect that.
Two points to add. Process and then external stakeholders. And we found that last year, we all heard from specific groups that there was no transparency. And when we looked into it deeper, and I know, David, you reached... and when we looked into it deeper, and I know, David, you reached out to many of the parents individually.
Sure.
And the theme was that a communication is one thing, that they knew, they had the information, they were part of the work in the SGC, but I often wonder if that turns into, we didn't get the allocation that we were hoping for and does that mean that we weren't transparent? And so I wonder what you see throughout in other districts and speaking with other colleagues in other districts, that's what I also hear, that it's kind of merged into, well, you know, it wasn't communicated well and we didn't get the funding that we wanted and so it wasn't a transparent process.
Yeah, so I'll share a story from Shelby County Schools in Tennessee, Memphis. And they went to a complete student-based budgeting model or more, that's their goal. So much more about identifying needs, giving principals dollars and letting them spend it, although they haven't extended flexibility to all principals. So the big win for them in year one was transparency, to be clear about why you get what you get. And this is a district where when budget, you know when budgets come out most years because board members start calling cabinet members because their constituents have called them and principals have called them to say, I got my budget, what the heck? So the CFO, your peer, in Memphis, the year one, knew he was on to something positive because when budgets went out, he didn't get a single call from a board member, which means board members didn't get a single call from principals saying, I don't understand why I got this. Now, that's step one, right? So the transparency is you can manage some of it, superintendent is what you're describing. But then, as you go deeper into the process, of course, people come up and say, but I really need this and, but I know that. And in, you know, many says like, and I'm going to call my brother-in-law who works in the district and I'm going to work the channels to get what I need. And at that point, it's all about how strong your spine is. As district leaders, as team, as board members, to what extent are you going to say, let's take that into account as we revisit our process and our formula for next year? Because we can do anything and we can't do everything. These are the things we've chosen to do. These are the flexibilities we've chosen to give. I hear you, I wish I could. We're going to be, operational effectiveness and your commitment here, which I think is really inspiring to operational effectiveness and supportive teaching and learning and everything else, is we got to live with our system. Let's change it next year. Or build a system for this kind of request and thing that come in later, right? If you want to, and some systems do that too, whether you call it superintendent's discretion or whatever you want, but be true to your system. And in year one, that's going to be one of the hardest things you do.
So my question is, I think this is a really good point because I think a lot about how important family and community engagement is. And though, are we being clear about those flexibilities in this example, right? So sometimes I go, setting expectations, not because you always want to be the downer in the room per se, but just because you're like, okay, this is the space. But I think what I'm hearing you say is even with that, you still have to stand firm because you're going to go ahead and communicate all of that. This is a set of flexibilities and you're still likely going to get somebody on the other side of that saying, okay, great, but I still needed this. And so we need to proactively, I like what you said at the very end, either stand firm or design a system where those other requests could come in. Our first year of doing this, and I was thinking about this, Chairman, you know, we're kind of saying, oh, yeah, he allowed all these extra things in. Not that that was my take on it per se, but it was this kind of, oh, what about this? What about this? And I think it's adding to like a couple of million dollars or something. So that's really interesting because part of me wants to be really clear about like, no, 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 this is the space we have to move. And you're saying the reality is, what you're saying across the country is, no matter how much you say that or do that, they're still going to come back. Okay. Thank you.
It's almost daily.
Well, it is a tension, so I just, you know, wanted to highlight it for us. And just recently, yes, last week, I did hear a parent speak to the fact that, you know, the school district is not honoring the formula, the money that is coming in from, from this, all the 13,000, you know, dollars, if you will, and the expectation that the money, every dollar has to follow the child. So...
Yeah, and that's a unique challenge in Connecticut in particular of what is the interpretation of where magnet dollars go? Magnet dollars go to the system and how do you set expectations around that? I mean, and Ms. Oliver, to your point here, like, principals are not children. Principals are highly skilled professional adults. And I will use an analogy that we can, I think, all relate to. I can tell my children bedtime is nine o'clock and as soon as they ask me to stay up late, if I say, okay, bedtime is no longer nine o'clock and my bedtime system doesn't exist. That's an overly simplistic and in no way a statement about principals, but that's the, especially when you're in a political role, that's part of the challenge that's going to happen and it happens for folks at district level and at school level as well.
We're good?
Yeah.
All right. So just, I will send you all, probably by the end of the week, the schedule of all of the engagement activities. Again, it's going to be heavily, heavy engagement in the month of December. Well, so we have the community forums and then we have meetings with SGCs, with our CBOs, faith-based leaders, all of our groups. And yes, you're all more than welcome to attend.
Absolutely. Be wonderful. All right. Thank you again for your time.
There are community forums scheduled for, new sessions scheduled for this weekend and it's not going to happen.
Correct. Okay, yes.
Thanks very much.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. I'm sorry I had to leave during it, but I read up on it and we stand and enjoy it. Thank you.